So we're just going from eight to ten and I'm just gonna be doing hopefully I'm gonna be able to get through. Integration techniques and differential equations, that's the goal is to get through those two and then so tomorrow we can focus on. Uh redoing all the uh you know the sequences and series and that kinda stuff. Um but yeah, so let's start in you know, let's wait wait about two more minutes and then we'll get started. But yeah, the idea is I think is that I'm gonna be just going, you know. Okay, so uh now I have confirmation that we can do. Uh this is I'm gonna be going through the I'm gonna talk about the sections. And then I'm gonna do the mini test relating to the section is the idea I think of how we're gonna do this and do the many test question so. Uh that means finding the many test questions which I will have to do. I have them in another window here, so uh yeah, that's the idea is that so the first mini test was. Um integration by parts, the second mini test was um. Looks like it was a trig substitution. Let's see, the third one was partial fractions, fourth one was differential equations. And fifth one was already um sequence and series, so let's try to see if we can do the first four, that's the goal here first four. Get through the content and the actual test for the first four mini tests um and yeah, since the solutions are posted on Bitbly. Um we are allowed to do them. Uh there we go and yeah.
Yo Adam, what's up?
Hey, hey fun, how's it going?
Wait, is this the last uh tutoring session you're doing?
Well, tomorrow I'm doing another math one and then I am gonna do another, I am gonna do an ELE when I just haven't really exactly planned when.
Ah okay.
Right, but yeah, this is the last.
Alright.
This is the second last math one, not the last one, the second.
Alright, have fun, I guess.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, so let's get started, I guess, uh does anybody have any questions before we start? Can everybody see my screen properly?
Easy and go.
We can see you and your screen.
Uh yeah, and I'm a recording.
Are we be in the recording?
Yes, you are in the recording, good, I mean, but a harmony would be nice. Can I get a harmony?
Oh, uh who?
Uh.
Uh.
Now we know, now we know for sure, now we know for sure, okay, thank you very much. So yeah, everything's good to go and someone asked about ECN. Joshua, did you ask about ECN?
Yeah, I was just like, well, since no one's asking, how was ECN?
Yeah, it went, I think it went pretty good for me, I had the talk so exam of course and uh.
Yeah.
I think it went totally fine.
It was decent.
It was very fair, like it it was it was all on uh things that we knew, but it was uh it was challenging as well.
I don't know first.
They were good questions, but I couldn't.
Yeah, they're good questions.
I think it's just really long.
Yeah.
It took me three hours, it took me.
For some reason, for some reason, but I like, I kept on getting answers, there was a few answers where it's like, none of these answers are correct. I was like, why do I have so many of these answers not being correct?
Yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah.
Well.
And then that and none of the above answer looks kind of uh promising.
Yeah.
Usually.
Yeah, it was.
So I just wrote a lot for his questions. But there's a lot of words for for what he was trying to ask you to do.
There is a lot of superfluous information.
Yeah, that's true, I it was nice for some questions I could just like cross out whole lines of like information cuz I knew it wasn't related to the. The question is like, okay, I can simplify this quite a bit. But yeah.
Let's get started.
Yeah, let's get started, that's true, that's a good, that's a good idea, um so yeah, so let's start here, we're gonna start with chapter three. Right, so chapter three, uh is my, yeah, I didn't leave something in the wrong spot, yeah, okay, it's fine. Uh chapter three is integration techniques. And tech. Meeks, that's a G. Um and so we start of course with integration by parts, three point one is integration by parts. Integration. By parts. And in general, all that means is that, okay, so like, we can take a second to try to derive the formula here, right, although the formula isn't quite. Doesn't make as much sense as, well, we'll see, so let's say we have two functions being multiplied together, U times V, right? And the goal is is that we want to be able to integrate, we wanna be able to integrate U times V. Right, that's the idea, we wanna be able to integrate U times V or just a product of functions, right? So one way you can think about this is we wanna undo the product rule that we get from derivative, so if you take the derivative of both sides here. U and V are both functions of X, so I can take the derivative with respect to X. And that'll give me, right, that'll give me U prime V plus UV prime. Right? And now if I integrate both sides again, right, which would just undo the action that I just took. Right, then what that would be is while integrating the left side, I would get with respect to X, I would get UV. Is equal to the integral of U prime V DX. Plus um the uh plus the integral of UV prime DX. Right? And then the idea is is that, well, now we have, I can rearrange this, I can rearrange this and solve for one of the two, it doesn't particularly matter which two. Which of the two, um but usually you solve for the, in in the case of showing this, you show solve for the UV prime one. So it's gonna be the integral of UV prime is equal to UV. Minus the integral of U prime V DX. Sorry, there should be a DX here, integral of UV prime DX. Right? And so what this is saying is it's saying that if I have a function, if I have a, yeah, a function that's a product of two functions in here. One of them is uh just you and the other one is some derivative of V. Then I can figure out another form of the same integral that's written like this, where it's the actual two functions, so you have to take you. Integrate V. To get V, it's our integrate V prime to get V. And then uh differentiate you. Right, and integrate. V prime to get V for this other thing, and the idea is is that this new integral is simpler than it was what it was before. Now, there's also another way to write this, um which is a little bit more functional, so if I write uh V prime as DV DX. Right, DX is equal to UV minus the integral of uh U prime could be DU DX. V DX, well, you can see it kind of looks like DX is cancel. Right? And we're left with UDV equals UV minus the integral of VDU. So. This is more of a functional way of looking at it, now of course, crossing out differentials like that is not how it actually works, but uh it's a, you know, it's a. A way to actually use the formula. Um so maybe let's do a quick example and I think I'm gonna jump to a hard example right away. And then we're gonna do the, we're gonna do the example from. Um. Let me see here, we're gonna do after the example from. The mini test, of course. So. Let's see what we have here. Or no, maybe, I guess, I guess I'll start with a simple example because it, I think this this kinda needs a simple example. Just to refresh people before we get into the um thing, so before we get into the hard ones, so let's do an example here with a kind of a simpler one. So it's gonna be the integral of X sine X DX. Okay, so right away, this is a product of functions, we don't have any other method to, you know, uh integrate a product of functions. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna use integration by parts, I'm gonna take this. Function, which is a product of two functions, two smaller functions, and rewrite it using this formula that we just derived up here. So I have to choose one to be my U and one to be my DV. Right, I have to choose one to be, what what's my U, so U and DV. Okay? And then I also have to choose, well, that's it, I have to choose my one one to be my U, one to be my my DV here, right? So my U, well, generally, what I want you to be is is I'm gonna take the derivative of you, right, that's gonna be my DU right here. Right, that's gonna be my DU. So um. Yeah, so. The idea is is that I want you, when I differentiate it, to become simpler. So if I differentiate sine X, that turns into a cos X, that's not really simpler, but if I differentiate X, that turns into one. Right? And so then my DV is gonna be the everything left, sine X DX. Right, I mean, a good way, you can also think about it like DV by DX is sine X DX. Right, and then you're integrating that, but usually it's written with the DX on the other side here. So, okay, so now we want to differentiate this, so DU by DX is equal to one. But again, you usually write that as not a fraction, but just DU equals DX. And then we wanna integrate this. So to integrate this, um it's gonna be V equals negative uh yeah, negative cos X. And so this is everything we need to know to fill in this formula. Right, so I can say that this is equal to UV. Negative X cos X. Right, minus the integral of V negative cos X DU, which is DX. Right, VDU. Okay, so the negatives here are gonna cancel and all I have left is that's the negative X cos X plus the integral of cos X, which is sine X. Uh not DX plus C. And there's our answer. So that's a simple one, any questions? Okay, otherwise.
What did you say, what was again to choose Liat or what was the rule again?
I never, I never really use that, I never really use that, there is, there is a rule like that and it's the order of what you should choose here, but I think the. Best rule to think is just what is, what gets simpler when I differentiate? Put that in you, what gets simpler or doesn't change particularly much when I integrate? Put that in.
So you should cannot prioritize you and if you get simpler.
If you get simpler, then that that's good, that's good.
So what's the rule again, just for like anyone I have wondering, Liat or what's the rule?
Lie eight, it was lie eight and that stands for, so lie eight.
Loves. Integral or was it loves?
I'll just put the textbook, I'll just put the uh. Put the textbook thing here, so.
There is a rule?
It's not really a rule, it's not, it it's it's just a way to help you, so. Like, this is the order in determining the appropriate choice for you, so first you should try logarithmic functions, then. Inverse trig functions, algebraic functions, it's all things that generally get simpler when you uh take the derivative, like log functions get simpler when you take the derivative.
And how do you work, how how was it, like if if uh you got, for example, a law, so in this case. You got an algebraic function and a trig function, so the the first one is it's it's algebraic, that's what you put for you and the and the second one.
But again, I I, yeah, go for it.
So out of these things, whoever comes first, that's all you is and the other thing by default is.
You have to fill in what what DV is, DV, yeah, DV is.
It's not a rule, it's a uh, it's a happy hour.
It's a helpful thing, yeah, but again, I think the best thing to to do is just say what gets simpler when you differentiate. Then put that there and what either doesn't change much or gets simpler when you integrate, nothing really gets simpler when you integrate, but what doesn't change much when you integrate, like you should go there.
This during session raises my memories.
Yeah, yeah.
Like math and Alan, you know, it's come.
Okay.
It's back, it's back to the past.
He's blast the pass, well, about blast to about like a week ago, when we did chapter four from the other textbook.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's try this one here, this is gonna be X to the, X to the seven, one plus X to the four, okay, DX obviously. So to integrate this. Well, okay, let's think about it for a second, if I were to choose right now, this is like a harder one, so if I were to choose right now, you and DV. If I choose you and DV, right, well, what gets simpler when I integrate, well, definitely uh when I differentiate, I mean, well. X to the seven gets simpler when I differentiate. Right? But um. The other stuff, but like DV, if I try to integrate the square root of one plus X to the four DX. Uh that's not very nice. Right? That's not very nice, I can't, I can't really integrate that very well. So what I have to do is I have to say, well, why can't I integrate this very well? What if I had, right, what if I had, if I say DU, what if I had X cubed here? Right, then I could. Then I could do it, right, because I just say U equals the center. The derivative of U is gonna be three X cube, uh four X cu- uh cubed, I mean. Right? And so how do I get an X cubed there, well, I can separate this X to the seven into an X cubed and an X to the four. So the X to the four is my U and the X cubed goes there with the U. So it's equivalent, it's the same thing, I just separated the the variables there, so now DU is four X cubed DX. And U is, well, the integral of this is the integral of X cubed, square root, one plus X to the four DX. Right? So now. Well, I have to integrate this, so it's gonna be a U sub, but I can't use the variable U because, sorry, my camera is probably in the way, uh I can't use a variable U cuz we're here, it's like. At this point, I usually call it T sub. So T equals one plus uh X to the four DT is four X cubed uh DX. Question or what?
No, no, question, no question, my bad.
Okay, okay, don't worry. Um so then I'm just gonna sub that in here, right, so DX. Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna. Trying to do this without writing too much space here, um this is gonna be one quarter, the integral, one quarter, right, DT. Yeah, DT over four, yeah, that's right, um one quarter of the integral of. The square root of T DT there. And that's just going to be U equals. Well, uh one quarter times, that's that's the T to the one half, so add one to it, so it's gonna be T. To the three halves divided by three halves. So two divided by three halves is multiplying by two thirds and there you go, so three times two is, uh three times four, I mean, is twelve. So it's one sixth. T, so finally, U equals one sixth. And this is gonna be, well, T was one plus X to the four to the three halves and now. Finally, we can. Let's see. Now what we can do. Make sure I did this right, just gonna uh triple check. Yeah, that looks right, so now what we can do is we can use this formula, right, we just figured out our U and Vs and DU's and DV's here. Right? And we can use the formula for integration by parts to simplify it, so it's UV, which is gonna be X to the four times V, sorry. Uh. That's supposed to be. That's supposed to be, sorry, that's supposed to be a DV, that's supposed to be a V. V, 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 sorry, made a mistake there, UDV is this thing here and then V here, yeah, sorry, hopefully I didn't confuse anybody. Uh the wrong variable I put, but yeah, so this is our, this is our U and this is our V. So now I'm gonna do U times V, so U is X to the four, times V is over six, times one plus X to the four. To the three halves and I'm gonna subtract the integral of VDU. Right, VDU. So. VDU is V is one to uh one sixth, one plus X to the four. To the three halves. Uh DU is four X cubed DX. Right? Okay, and well, look at this, right, this is already something I can integrate, this is again just a U substitution. So this is gonna be an X to the four over six. One plus X to the four. To the three halves minus, well, I already know. This integral cuz the same logic as before, but I'll I'll simplify it a little bit more, so one sixth times the integral of uh one plus X to the four. Oh, it won't be exactly the same, actually, I realize, but so I'll do it, I'll do it explicitly again. Uh four X cubed DX and now what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna do another T sub, so T equals. Um T equals what, T equals one plus X to the four. So this tells us that DT is gonna be four X cubed DX. Well, look at that, we exactly have a four X cubed DX, so perfect. Right, and so I can exactly replace this formula with X to the four over six. One plus X to the four to the three halves minus one sixth times the integral. Of T to the three halves DT. Just a U sub there. Right? And now do that integration, I'm gonna get X to the four over six, one plus X to the four to the three halves. Minus one sixth times, so so we're gonna, it's a power function, so just increase the exponent by one, so it's gonna be five halves. So T to the five halves, divide by five halves means multiply by two fifths, so that's thirty. That's one fifteenth. Right? And uh yeah, and that's T to the the thing plus C and I'm just gonna sub back in my answer for this one. Which was um my my T value, so it's gonna be X to the four over six times one plus X to the four. To the three halves minus, okay, so it's gonna be um one over fifteen. Well, minus, yeah, one over fifteen, T was one plus X to the four. So it's gonna be uh one over fifteen times one plus X to the four to the five halves plus C. And there's our final. Integral. Final result. So this was a harder one because you had to do some trick, right, you had to notice that I, this was difficult to integrate, uh but the problem was that I didn't have enough. Powers of X here, but I, so I can, the whole X to the seven didn't have to go, so this was X to the seven originally. Just X to the seven. Whole X to the seven didn't have to be the U, I could split it as much as I want, it's a product of two functions, so it doesn't matter. How I split it as long as it's a product of two functions. Right, so. Here I decided to split it like this on purpose, so X cubed goes over here and X to the four stays by itself because it gets me the ability to integrate this. Okay, any questions? If not, I will do uh the mini test question.
So is there like a thing, like certain like condition? Where you have to like split it or do you just have to?
You you kinda just have to, you just kinda have to notice that I had, the reason I couldn't integrate here, oh, my camera is probably covering it, the reason I couldn't. Well, it's because like, eh like, if I had an X cubed there, I could do a U sub, right? If I had an X cubed there.
There.
And so since like that's what was stopping me, I can put an X cubed there because I can split it, I noticed that I can do that, right, so splitting the function. Splitting the the left function uh into like putting a little bit into the right function is a common thing to let you integrate this. So I guess the idea is is that if you notice that your right function, doesn't matter left or right, but the other function, that's not the differentiating one. Is really hard to integrate for some reason, then maybe you can split this function into it to make it easier to integrate. That's the idea.
Oh, okay, alright.
So yeah. Um, okay. Then let's take a look at the mini test question, so my mini test question was.
Is that, I mean, this question is same for everyone or you don't know?
Numbers are slightly different.
Same, but the numbers are different.
Numbers are different, yeah, so I had the seventh root of pi over, the integral from zero to the seventh root of pi over three. X to the thirteen. Secant squared X to the seven DX. So. Uh someone's got their mic on, could they mute?
So I'm on, that's the question, that's why my mic on.
Oh, okay.
So, is like, did you take a picture of this or save there or is there some more, like like access it?
Uh you can access it on Bitbly, but this is just like, I I I write all my tests in OneNote, so they're still there, they're they're still like. But yeah, you can access it in Bitbly and the solutions, that's why I'm able to do this, cuz the solutions are there too.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so for here, well, okay, we have first of all, a pretty complicated. Right function, the integrating function, cuz this is pretty clearly the one that I'm gonna differentiate because I want, you know, power functions are good to differentiate, the exponent goes down by one, that's good. But then how would I integrate this? I'd be able to integrate it because I can integrate secant squared of X, secant squared of X is tangent of X, pretty sure. Um the inter, they said the the integral of secant squared is is tangent of X and so, but I can't do that cuz it's X to the seven. So with the, you know, with the chain rule, I'd need to, or with the su- U sub really is what it is. Is I would need to have the derivative of this in there somewhere, so what's the derivative of X to the seven, it's gonna be six, uh seven X to the six. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna split this into an X to the six and then what's uh what else is gonna be here is gonna be an X to the seven, seven plus six is thirty. And now I can do this, right, because it's gonna be U equals. So U equals X to the seven. U equals X to the seven. Then we have um DV is equal to X to the six. Uh secant squared X to the seven DX. And I can figure out what DU is, DU is seven X to the six, DV, well, V, I mean, V is gonna be the integral. Um of X to the six, secant squared of X to the seven DX. And I can do this with a single T sub, so it's gonna be T equals X to the seven, which tells us that, which tells us that DT. Is gonna be seven X to the six DX. Right, so this is gonna be tell us that V equals one seventh. Uh the integral of secant squared of T DT. Which tells us again that uh V equals one seventh, well, that's just tan, right, tan, the derivative of tan is secant squared, yeah. So it's gonna be tan T plus C, V equals one seventh. Tan T, T we said was X to the seven, X to the seven plus C. And there we go, that's our V, so now I can use this to plug into our formula here. Right, and remember, it's a definite integral, so we're gonna have to evaluate that anti-derivative, but you can usually forget about the bounds until the end and just plug in the bounds. Um so we do UV, which is gonna be X to the seven, right, tangent of, sorry, one seventh. Tangent of X to the seven. Minus the integral. From zero to the seventh, seventh root of pi over three.
So Adam, you don't change the bounds when you change the variable?
I never changed the bounds on anything, I don't think that's a good way of doing it, I think it's more confusing, sometimes when you do a, when you do a a U sub. Or anything like that, people change the bounds.
Yeah.
I think that's always more.
Cuz that's cuz that's how, that's how uh CPW taught us.
Yeah.
And yeah, honestly, the way, you're right, it does get a little bit confusing.
Yeah, there's just, there's just no real reason, you can just not do that and then at the end, plug everything in and it would work just as like the same.
Okay.
So.
It's treated as like a indefinite integral until you have to.
Yeah.
Sub it all back.
Exactly, so I'm just gonna write here, just to remind us that it's a definite integral, I'm just gonna write here, evaluate from zero, so you have to evaluate that term. From zero to the seventh root of pi over three, but honestly, I could just leave this out. Leave out all the, leave out all the bounds and that's probably, I'll do that, I'll just leave out all the bounds for now and then do it indefinitely. And then, and then just put the bounds in, evaluate it at the bounds after. And yeah, that's it. Um so, okay, then we're gonna turn this into the integral of VDU, so V was one seventh. Tan X to the seven. And DU was, so we don't need the plus C, it's okay, uh DU was seven X to the six. Oh, sorry, sorry, it should be a DX here. DX. Uh the sevens cancel there, so it's gonna be one seventh X to the seven, tan X to the seven minus. Uh and this is just going to be the integral of tan X to the seven. X to the six DX. Right, or in fact, I'll I'll actually leave the, I'll leave the um sevens there, X to the six DX, it's gonna be one seventh in the front. Uh you'll see why in a second, um so I'm gonna do a T sub, T equals uh X to the seven, which tells us that DT. Is gonna be seven X to the six DX, that's why I left the seven, so it's right there and this is gonna be one seventh X to the seven. Tan X to the seven. Uh minus one seventh and this is just gonna be the integral, integral of tan. Tan T. Yeah, tan T DT.
So um, I have a question.
Sure, yeah.
Sorry, yeah, so you know how you said like T equals the X to the power of seven, man?
Yeah.
Yeah, so couldn't have you just done it at the beginning, cuz that's what I did.
Uh T equals. Like up here, use that?
Yeah, like at the very beginning.
Like with this still as, with this still as a thirteen? Uh you, you wouldn't be able to do that here.
Yeah, not as like a thirteen, but like after you like split it and all, could you have done that or?
Uh, not quite, because then you'd still have, I said, six and seven here, because this integrates nicely. But you'll still have an X to the seven hanging out there. Oh, no, never mind, that's just T, so it'd be T times, yeah, that would work, never mind, you could do that, yeah, cuz this, since this is, since this is T, uh that's okay. So yeah, you could do that and then that would be a different form of the integral, but that would work. Seems like.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't too sure, I I. Okay, yeah, I wasn't too sure, I think I did something like that on this question.
But if you're ever in a doubt, put it into Symbolab, because usually when it comes to differences like that, it's usually a difference of the C in the, in the, in the end.
Yeah.
Might be the same integral, but.
Trig functions, yeah, yeah. Uh, integral of tan, I don't remember what that is, so give me a second.
It's negative lawn COS X.
Negative lawn COS X, okay.
Magnitude of COS X.
Yeah, okay, so I'll write that here, it's gonna be one-seventh X to the seven, tan X to the seven. Minus one-seven, lawn, uh, so plus, because it was negative lawn, absolute value COS T?
Uh, yeah, COS, I think it's also equal to the positive lawn secant. I don't remember, I think there's like more than one answer for that, but I, I don't know if it makes a difference which one we choose.
Yeah, it doesn't make a difference, cause I did have for mine and it, yeah, I got it remarked in, in, yeah. It was right at the end, so it doesn't really matter, yeah.
Good, yeah, so COS of X to the seven there, plus C. And now we just into, we, you know, we um evaluate this from zero to root, seventh root of pi over three, which was, that was it, right, pi over three, yeah. So.
Do we have a plus C if it's a uh definite integral?
Well, you'd, you'd like, you kinda do, but it doesn't really matter, like, yeah, we can just ignore it, we can just say C equals zero, and then, and then you can just make it go away. Right, uh, the idea is, is that if you're, you're doing this evaluated at uh this value minus this evaluated at this value, the Cs will cancel like that, so it doesn't matter what value of C you choose. But um, yeah, just say C equals zero, and there we go, that's the simple version of it. So, yeah, evaluate this from those two values, so at the first one, it's gonna be the seventh root of pi over three to the power of seven, so one-seventh times pi over three, tan pi over three, plus one-seventh lawn absolute value COS pi over three. Um, okay, minus evaluated at zero, well, let's see, what do we have, evaluated zero, this is zero. Right, this, this first term is zero, and then COS of zero is one, lawn of one is zero, so it's all zero. So this is the answer. Of course, you can simplify that, yeah, that's, that's the answer. I don't even know, did I, what did I do on the test, did I simplify it more, I must have, but, yeah.
You can find trial one over seven and maybe solve COS power three to like, give a value?
Yeah, let's see what, let's see.
It's one half.
It's one-half? Yeah, one-seventh, so I have, okay, so I have a pi over twenty-one, tan.
Uh, tan, pi over three is uh square root three, not half.
No, no, I said COS power three is, is half.
Yeah.
I don't know what that is in lawn though, you can't really, it's not like, can't find the answer to that.
Yeah, lawn of one-half.
Wait, lawn of one-half is negative lawn two. Cause that's it.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and that is what I did here, I'm pretty sure, yeah, that's what it is. So, uh, this is gonna be root three, this one have you, yeah, root three pi over twenty-one. Plus uh negative lawn or minus lawn two over seven. Someone's got their mic on, could you mute? It's you, Erwin, yeah, or unless you have a question.
It's always me, I know, you always forget, ah, it's always me.
It's okay, it's okay, it's just I hear, I hear loud echoing going through, it's.
Oh, no, it's, it's not your fault, don't worry.
Um, so there you go, that's the answer of the integral, so I just did indefinite integral and then evaluated at the end, that's a better way of doing integration, definite integration, and yeah. Okay, so there we go, that's integration by parts, essentially, any questions about integration by parts before I move on?
So wait, we don't add like a plus C at the end, right, cause we.
No, this is just a value, this is just a definite value.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Okay, so if we're good with that, then I will move on, oh, yeah, of course, I should mention, like, I have my notes on this, my notes are complete. They're uh all the way to the end of the course, so you can find them on my website, as always, or in the description, if you're watching a video, um.
Okay, the plug.
The plug, yeah, gotta, gotta plug it. Um, okay, so then next, we have um three point two, which is uh trigonometric trigonometric integration. And essentially, the idea here is just that, if I open my notes. The idea with trigonometric integration is, is just these two sections here, so the first one is uh the if we have one of these two integrals. So an integral that looks like either of these two, right, well, it's a bad screenshot, sorry, I'll take better screenshots, the next ones. Um, so either it's, well, let me, let me just do that again. Better, um, so COS J times SIN K DX, secant J, tan K. So it's just some combinations of coses, uh coses and sines, um, and if I want to integrate this somehow, right? Based on the powers, what exact value, well, what, not exact values, but what properties of those powers are. So if, if we're looking at just at the first case, right, just looking at the first case, case one. There's three, it said, there's three configurations that we have a clear next step, as it says right here, so if J is odd, we use four, and I mean put the equations here so you can see what four is. There, there they are. So we use, here's our equation table, so if J is odd, we use uh the, you know, the fundamental, the whatever trigonometry um to eliminate all but one of the COS Xs, and then use up a SIN X in. We'll do an example of that, it'll make more sense, K is odd, we use four to do the similar thing, and if they're both even then use it to eliminate all the SIN, SIN squares and COS squares. Um, and we'll get, we'll do an example, it'll make more sense when we do it, but essentially, if you just can just follow these rules, you'll get your integral into a form that's uh easier to deal with. Yeah, uh, and so similar rules for secant, uh, I'll put the secant rules on the screen too, but of course, they're in my notes, so you can. Uh, and before we move on to the, before we move on to the examples of this, so this is for the second case. Before we move on to examples of this, there is another section of this, um, and it's the reduction formulas, it's another part of this section. Which is the reduction formulas, so if I have, for example, I'll just put them on the screen. There's the reduction formulas for secant to the N and tan to the N, so you see, if we have secant to the N, I can relate it, I can make it equal to a, another um integral where secant is at a lower power, two, two degrees less. And so I might have to do this multiple times, it's just, it's reducing the power of the secant of the tan, and we do also have reduction formulas for sine and cosine. Which I'll put on the screen here too, although the ones for sine and cosine were not actually mentioned in the course, I just thought they were. This was a good place to put them, we just found them, so that's a good place to put them, so, yeah, those are the reduction formulas.
Did we learn about like the secant and tan one or?
Yeah, these two are from the course, this is from online, I just found.
Yeah, I have a, I have a question.
Yeah.
Okay, so I know for the textbook, if you go to the back, there's a bunch of like integrals, can we use those, it's like integral sine, integral COS. It's like a table about like standard integrals, right?
Yeah.
Can we use those?
How use them, you mean like on the test, can we use them?
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
It's like standard ones, like sine, COS, tan, nothing like fancy, just like the standard ones.
I know, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what exactly the rules are with the, with thing, I, I'm pretty sure it's. I don't know, yeah, I'm not, I'm really not sure, yeah, I'm looking at the back, there are a bunch of good, there are a bunch of the reduction formulas, yeah.
And also, uh, the exam has six questions, right?
The exam has six questions, I thi- I think, I thought it was five, but maybe I do remember it being six, I don't know, someone else know?
You're good, cause if it's five, then it's, that means you're gonna get one question from every chapter plus the bonus one kind of.
Uh, it's a, it's six, four worth ten marks and two of them smaller, so they're worth five marks each.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, so let's take a look at some examples here, I'm just gonna do the examples from the uh yeah, I'm just gonna do example from the textbook here, so the first example we have is evaluate this integral, so COS squared uh X obviously, sine cubed X DX, and we're gonna use our um formulas for this, our, our our algorithms for this pretty much, so we're in case one, it's COS to the J, sine to the K, so what do we know, well, COS is squared, sine is cubed. So if J is odd, that's not true, if K is odd, that's not true, if, well, sorry, K is odd, yeah, K is odd, use four, so this equation right here, to eliminate all but one SIN X, then substitute um U equals COS X. So the idea of that is that, okay, well, we can use sine squared plus COS squared, I'm gonna drop the X. Obviously, you need the X, but.
So for the um, for the U sub, they say that you're, they're talking about um when you do the integration, right? Uh, the integration by parts, the U.
Yeah, when you, oh, no, 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 that means U sub, that's like you, a U sub, like.
Or just the straight up U sub.
Just a straight up.
Not uh integration by parts.
Not integration by parts, yeah.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
Right, so here I can rearrange this to sine squared, and that means I can rearrange this integral to COS squared X. Um, one minus COS squared X, sine X DX, right? And what that lets me do now is I can say, okay, well, T equals, I'll just use T for my U sub, uh, T equals COS X. DT is negative SIN X DX. So this integral is equal to negative um T squared, one minus T squared DT. Which is negative, the integral of T squared minus T to the four DT. Which is equal to, um, I'll just rearrange it, so the integral of T to the four minus T squared DT. Which is equal to uh T to the five over five minus T cubed over three. Plus C, and sub back, sub T back in, so it's gonna be COS to the five over five X minus COS cubed X over three plus. And there you go. So you see, that's, that's generally how all the algorithms are gonna work, you're gonna do what it says, you're gonna see that there's a, you know doing the U sub is gonna get you something much simpler, and then this is much easier to integrate, right, this is something much simpler. So, yeah, okay, any questions about this one?
Could you just uh show the answer really quickly? Thank you.
Nope. Okay, so that's the general strategy for these things, let's see uh where K is, oh, we already did that. And they're both even, okay, let's try this one.
Can you quickly show the conditions uh for this method?
Here, this, this here?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Um, so the next example I'll do is the integral of sine to the four X DX. So uh this is our case one again, right, this is the case one, so um, well, what's happening here, it's J for the COS and K for the SIN, so they're both even, right? Zero is an even number, so it's sine to, it's COS to the zero, sine to the four, so they're both even. So use five and six to eliminate all Sines and COS, so five and six are, let's see what five and six are, these are from my notes, right, so there's the five and six from there. So five, I'll write this here, probably my camera's blocking, okay, I'll just leave it here. So five is uh this one. So I'm gonna use that to eliminate all the, well, okay, so there's no COS, so I don't actually have to use five, but I'll use six to eliminate all the SIN squared, because you see, I can write this as sine squared X squared DX. And I can use this formula to rearrange for something um in terms of SIN squared, like SIN squared is equal to something, so it's gonna be sine squared X is equal to, what's gonna be COS two X minus one over negative two, so one minus, one minus COS two X over two, so do I have that up here? Um, just wanna make sure. Sin squared, yeah, I rearranged that right, that's fine, that's, that's okay. So now I can rewrite this as the integral of one minus COS two X over two squared, right, so that's gonna be the integral, well, one quarter, the integral of one minus COS two X squared. Right, um, and I can deal with this now, how can I deal with this now? Yeah, not in a nice way. Yeah?
The, just, I just didn't see how you were able to turn it from COS minus one, like.
Oh, cause it was, it's, it's a neg- uh negative two in front of the sine squared, so I'm dividing by.
Yeah, 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 we see that, yeah.
Negative two, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so then, yeah, uh, the solution just does, just actually expands this, so it's gonna be one minus uh two COS two X um plus COS squared two X. Uh, DX, and now we can do, sign, we don't have that, COS two X. Leave it separate, yeah, I think I just have to break this up into parts here. Um, so, let me see this quickly, yeah, 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 I see. I don't know if we're gonna get the same answer as the thing here strangely, did I make a mistake? No, I didn't make a mistake, one over four, let's just go forward and see what happens, maybe I'm gonna multiply by something at the end. So this is gonna be one quarter times the integral of DX, which is X, minus the integral, minus two times the integral of COS two X DX. Um, plus the integral of COS squared two X DX. So it's gonna be X over four minus, so the integral of COS two X, the integral of COS X is uh SIN X. But if I take the der- so as we sine two X, so if I take the derivative of sine, sine two X, I'm gonna get COS, well, two COS two X, so I gotta multiply by one-half here to get COS two X, so the dir- the integral is gonna be uh negative two times one-half sine two X, so this is the one-half and the two are gonna go away, so it's gonna be sine two X.
Wait, does that one over four not apply to the entire thing, or does?
It does, yeah, it does, sorry, this is gonna be, yeah, so it's gonna be over four, it's one over four, thank you, that's right. Um, so then, let me rewrite that again, it's gonna be two over four times one-half sine two X plus one over four integral of COS squared two X DX, and here, this is just gonna be one over four sine two X. Minus one over four, yeah. How did that change three? I'm just confused about one thing. But maybe, oh, no, 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 I see what's gonna happen, okay, never mind, everything's okay, no mistake was made. X over four minus one over four sine two X plus one over four, now COS squared two X, well, um COS squared X. Yeah, COS squared X, I can get from this formula here, which is COS two X equals two COS squared X minus one. So I'll say COS two X equals two COS squared X minus one. I can rearrange this for COS squared X and just evaluate it at two X, right, so it's gonna be uh, yeah.
I just wanted to say, you could also use um reduction formula, if you wanted to, this is technically easier, but you could also use reduction.
Yeah, you could reuse a reduction formula, that's true, maybe let's use the reduction formula, yeah, let's do that, so that we can show that too, it's a good idea. Um, so let's see the reduction formula for s- for COS. Right, so I can relate COS here, I'm gonna take the integral of COS, oh, but it's two X, so that's not a problem, I can just take it, I, I don't want it to be a problem with the things, I'm gonna say two, T equals two X DT equals uh two DX, so it's just gonna be um two DX or two, so yeah, so it's gonna be one over eight integral of COS squared T DT, and now I can use the reduction formula. So we have. Let's see, x over four minus one over four sine two x plus one over eight. Now, I'm gonna use the integral here, so one over eight times one over n, so n was two, this is cos squared, so two. Cosine to the n minus one x, but it's t, sine t plus n minus one, one over n, two. That was the integral of cos to the n minus two, cos to the two minus two is close to the zero, so it's the integral of dx. Right? So now, uh that's with the reduction formula that I just did that with, right? Just put that, put that right there, you can see. Um, and now, let's simplify, this is essentially all ready to go, so x over four minus one over four sine two x plus now multiply the one over eight n, so one over sixteen, cosine t was two, two x, so cosine two x sine two x plus one half integral dx is x. Uh, times one over eight though, right? Multiplying by one over eight. So it's gonna be um. There one half there, one half doesn't seem right. No, maybe it's right. Okay, um, this is gonna be one over sixteen x. Now, um. Six over. Let me just see something quickly, one. Yeah, somehow we lost.
Isn't it two x over sixteen? So that's eight, one over eight.
I got it.
Two, like, uh, cuz it's two x, right? Cuz we said that it was two x. We said d uh t is equal to two x, so shouldn't it be uh?
Oh, you're right, this is, this is dt, yeah. You're right, this is dt, so that's t, so that's two x, so that's one over eight, there we go, that was the problem. Thank you, that is correct. And I think someone else maybe was just about to say that too, so yes, thank you, and that, everything works out now, good. So this is three over eight x, combining those, minus one over four sine two x plus one over sixteen cosine two x sine two x uh plus c. Should have, should be a plus c here too. Yeah. And that is right, let's just check one over, oh, there's supposed to be one over thirty-two here. One over thirty-two, uh, okay, well, I lost the two. How did I lose a two? Two times six is that, so I lost a half, actually. Um, t is that, so. One over n is two.
Uh, what, what, um, again?
I just, this is supposed to be a, this is supposed to be a thirty-two here, instead of a sixteen, it's supposed to be a thirty-two there.
Wait, you, you, I think you made a a mistake somewhere.
Yeah, where?
Uh, I mean, this doesn't have to do with the one you're saying right now. I might be tripping for saying this, but you know the one over eight in the second last line?
Yeah.
The one that's multiplying with everything? So when you multiply with the one over two, become one over sixteen. But then the one over two on the right side, on the right term, right, the second term? When you multiply one over eight by that one over two, shouldn't that also become one over sixteen?
This one right here? You're right, it's just that this, this is the integral of dt, so that's gonna be t here. T is, t is, so it's gonna be, you're right, it should be one over sixteen, but t is two x.
Oh, okay, so it cancels, alright.
That's what happens, yeah. Um, yeah, I lost thirty-two here, I mean, lost that thing, okay. See what I did. This is t equals two x, I should just start from the start here, let's just see. So squared, obviously, nothing's wrong here so far. This is, that's fine, square the two.
Uh, did you write, I don't know if this is it, you go down uh one more line, I think. Uh, you wrote negative two over four, for what? No, 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 it's, uh, I'm sorry, up a little bit.
Up a little bit, yeah.
Hey, you wrote negative two over four, I don't know if that has anything to do with, oh, that was for the cos two x, so never mind.
That was for the cos two x, yeah. Okay, let's see here, one over four, one minus cos two x is fine, one minus two cos two x plus cos squared two x.
Wait, hold up, I think, wait, now I'm gonna cause it, do you know why it's not right?
Um, one over four, minus two over four, cos two x dx plus one over four, cos squared two x. That's, that's fine, one over four sine two x, what happened to that sign? Oh, no, nothing happened to that sign, that sign's fine. Plus, one over four, should this be something else? One minus. B squared, that's fine. And then here we have one over four times this. Which is right.
Should we try using um the other method we were gonna try to do this integral and see what we get? Cuz there's also the uh where you rearrange um uh cos two x.
The formula, yeah, no, it's not that there's a, it's it's not that there's a problem with the with the method, right? The method would work, it's just somewhere, yeah, we can try that too, though, yeah. Um, let me just see, uh, somewhere here, I just made a stupid mistake, so t equals two x, dt equals two dx. So multiply, so divide by two here, multiply by two on the bottom. To dt, so it's gonna be one over eight. Yeah, one over.
Oh, I think I see, or no, no, I don't think so. I, actually, yeah, no, no, I was.
No. Don't worry. Uh, let's see. Is my, let me see this for a second. One over n, cosine minus one sine x. Yeah.
Is this like, it's, is this example from like a lab, or is this like from like?
From the textbook, from the textbook.
Oh, from the textbook, okay.
Come on, what's the problem here? One over n, cos sine, n minus one, it's one, and n minus two is dt. So one over eight times one over two, so that's one over sixteen, somewhere here, I'm supposed to have another, okay, how about we just put it in Wolfram? Integrate. Integrate uh sine to the four x. Yeah, multiply that. Uh, on the, oh, okay, they have, yeah, of course, they write it in a different form, so I can't see what it is. Um, sine cubed, no, not, okay, I have to desmos it then to see if it's the same thing. Um, so give me one second. I mean, it doesn't particularly matter, so let's just probably move on if I can't figure this out in the next one minute. Um, but somewhere in there is just some mistake. Cos two x sine two x. And then this answer was. This, that's the Wolfram answer, I'm just typing while, you know, I'll show you typing it in.
But there's like slider answers for the textbook, do you want me to like send it to you?
It's okay, I don't have a prob- I don't have a problem with the, like, with getting the answer, I'm just off by that one half, so it's it's just somewhere is a mistake, like somewhere is just a small mistake, but the method is like fine, the method is. Plus sine of four x, yeah, okay, so they're not the same thing. Not, the, what I'm doing here, I'm just checking, is like, is my answer the same thing as the answer? Um, and they're not the same thing, obviously. Twelve x minus, yeah. Number thirty-two. Yeah, so somewhere in here is a mistake, that should be a thirty-two, um, I still can't tell where the mistake is. Uh, maybe I didn't multiply by a quarter properly through everything, I don't know.
What if the textbook answer is wrong?
That's kind of what I was checking here, that's kind of what I was checking here, like, my answer is that this, this I know is right cuz Wolfram gave it to me.
Yeah.
Right? So I'm comparing it with what I got, and those are not the same thing.
We would have the actual textbook answer.
The textbook answer is this with a thirty-two, so let's see, thirty-two, oh, it's still not right.
What chapter and what question I can like.
I, I did the rearranging of this using like the other method, and I got a different answer than the uh production method. But I don't know if that's correct, and I just. Oh, never mind, sorry, I'm, I'm uh, I'm not reading correctly.
It's been a bad day.
Yeah, I'm not reading correctly.
It's been a long day, and.
Sin x times cos x is uh. So we have, we have cos x sine x here, so this is gonna be three over eight x minus one over four sine two x plus one over sixteen, cos two x times sine two x is gonna be one half sine of two x minus two x is zero, plus sine four x. Plus c, which finally gives us three over eight x minus one over four sine two x plus one over thirty-two sine four x plus c. That is the correct answer, okay, we were good, it's just.
What equation? And it matches up with what I found using the other method.
Okay, good, good. Uh, I, this right here.
Oh, that one, alright, but, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Okay, there we go, let's, I think, let's do the uh, let's do the question now from the mini test, and let's see if we can get that going. Um, and yeah, so let's give it a try. Uh, I think it's quite, well, it must be, must be test two. Oh, no, test two is uh not test two, test two is uh trig substitution, so actually, we have no mini tests for this section. Um, let's see. Have here, let's do it one, let's do an example with the tan. Uh, and then probably let's move on to trig substitution after that, so we're not gonna get as far as I wanted to today, but yeah. So let's do the example with tan here, this is gonna be the integral of tan to the five x secant cubed x dx. So let's get our uh situat- like our our algorithm, I guess, so this is section two, or like case two. Where it's uh secants and tans, right? Which one's the secant and which one's the tan one, so uh secant to the j, tan to the k. Secant to the j, tan to the k, so um. Secant to the j, so j, j equals three, k equals five, so um is k odd? Yeah, k is odd, k is odd, use eight, eight is this one right there, to eliminate all but one tan x and then sub in secant, okay? So um I'm gonna use this right here, so I'm gonna say um, I'm gonna use eight there, so it's gonna tell me uh eliminate all, what, one, yeah, so tan squared x is secant squared x minus one. So this is gonna be um, yeah, tan is secant. That's not gonna quite work. Because k is odd.
No, but the integral of uh uh secant is uh secant x tan x, right? So that should, you should lose the one extra tan x and just have secant.
Oh, and just have secant squared, which we can integrate. Yeah, I see, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 okay, makes sense. So, yeah, tan squares is gonna be, this is gonna be tan times you can, well, I'll write it out fully, so it's gonna be tan times tan to the tan squared x squared, secant cubed x dx. The reason I write it like that is because we can just now do tan x, tan squared is secant squared x minus one squared, secant secant cubed x dx, and now we can just say u equals secant x. Du equals uh secant x tan x, which we have, so it's gonna be the integral of um it's gonna be u squared minus one squared u squared du. And now we can just integrate this, it's gonna be u to the four, I'll say u squared times, u to the four minus two u squared plus uh one. Yep, du is gonna be uh y- the integral of u to the six minus two u to the four plus u squared du. And now, integrate this, it's gonna be u to the seven over seven minus two u to the five over five plus u to the cu- to the cubed, to the three over three, plus c, sub u back in, you were secant x, so secant to the seven x over seven minus two fifths secant to the five x plus one third uh secant cubed x plus c. Yeah, looks right to me. Yep, that's good. Okay, so then that's it for me for the, for three point two, we're gonna move on to point three now, unless anybody has any particular questions.
Was that, was that the mini test question?
This wasn't the mini test question, we didn't have a mini test question on just three point two, it was three point two and three point three together. So, that's why I'm moving on to point three, and then we're gonna do the mini test question for three point three.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so then, three point three is trig substitution. Okay, and so this is a method we have to integrate things that look, that have this. Uh, so a squared minus x squared, or the square, sorry, the square root of a squared minus x squared, the square root of a squared plus x squared or the square root of x squared minus a squared. So we have a method for each of these. If you ever see anything like this, this is how it works. The idea is essentially how we get to these equations, like the the method we use. My notes, my notes back up. The idea is, is that if I were to write, if I, if I write the square root of a squared plus, sorry, minus x squared, right? Well, you can kind of think that this is representing a side length of a triangle. Right? Because if you imagine, if I say this is a and this is x, well, then the side length here is a squared minus x squared. Right? And so, we wanna have a new way, and if we call this angle in here theta, right? We wanna have a new way of representing this quantity. Well, what's that quantity? It's gonna be um for this particular case. It's going to be um sine, cuz it's. Wait, sine x. Oh, yeah, no, sorry, not sine, wait a minute.
It'd be a cosine, since it's like.
Yeah, it's a cosine, what am I doing here? T x, sub x equals. Oh, okay, no, 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 this is, this is how we, this is how we would do it. We, we wanna get something simpler to to represent this, right, to represent the same situation, so what we can say is we can say sine, we do say sine here, sine theta equals x over a, right, opposite over hypotenuse. Right, so this, this, this equation describes the same thing as this expression here, right? It describes the same thing. So eh, what we can do then is we can rearrange this and say x equals a sine theta. And this is a substitution we can make, right? This is a substitution we can, we can make it. Right, so it's, it's another way to express what this is expressing as a triangle, we can literally think of it as a triangle and then have a new variable theta and integrate here with trig functions. And what this left us to is, since we're integrating with trig functions, we can use three point two skills to get that, to to be able to actually do that. So in general, there's, you know, I have a couple things here for it, so in general, um, pretty much see this, use this, so see this, use this substitution, right? They all have the same explanation, just with different size of the triangle. Right? So um there is some technicality about the domain of these things, um, but don't really worry too much about it. And the idea actually, sorry, I didn't mention, is that at the end, you substitute in that theta equals sine inverse of x over a, right? You substitute that back in. And um, this is how we get back to like x, right? We get back to x as our variable. Okay, um, how does this help us? Of course, that's another question, so I, we're gonna do some examples of that, but I'll just quickly copy and paste all the uh. Well, actually, I don't know how useful it is to copy and paste. In my notes, there's like an actual step by step for each situation, I'll just post that. I just put it, take a screenshot of it, but not talk about it too much, so there you go, so if you wanted the deep, you know, a more detailed instruction for each one, so that kind of substitution for that, do that. But yeah, let's, let's get into a practice problem. So I'm just gonna find one in the textbook. So I'm just gonna find one in the textbook, just find some random one. We'll start with. Yeah, we'll start with. Start with this. So the example is. Integrate uh the square root of four minus X squared over X DX. So this is a situation where we have A squared minus X squared, cuz this is two squared, right, two squared minus X squared. And so we just do the situation, right, we do, we do what it tells us, so X equals A sine X. Right, and that also tells us that DX is um two cosine. Ah, that should be. X equals, oh, sorry, that's a theta, sorry, 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 that's a theta, so theta D theta. Right, so we have a new variable, the point is is that we're introducing a new variable, so X equals two sine theta, DX equals two cos theta D theta. That's the point. So the reason we do this is because now if we look at it, right, if we do the integration, now let's, let's, let's put it in here and see what happens. Right, so it's gonna be two squared minus two squared sine squared theta over X. Uh, well, over, sorry, over two sine theta, X is two sine theta, right? And DX is two cos theta D theta, so I've entirely changed this integral into theta. In terms of theta, using this substitution we just made. And again, the reason this is actually useful is because like at the top here, I can factor out that square root of two squared. And all I'm left with is one minus sine squared theta over, well. Yeah, okay, I'll say over sine theta. Cos theta D theta. This, of course, is just two, so it's two times the integral, one minus sine squared is cos squared. It's gonna be the square root of cos squared theta over sine theta, cos theta. D theta, two times the square, well, the square root of cos squared is cos. Theta, but times another cos is gonna be cos squared over sine theta. D theta.
One thing just mixed, missed me though with the the D theta, the theta, if you scroll up a bit. Yeah, just DX equal the cosine D theta, like it kind of, what we, is it that we're like. differentiate with respect to X, so how do we just get D theta in it, I kind of forgot this one.
Well, it's, it's DX by D theta.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And then we multiply both sides by D theta. And then we move, it moves over like.
Did we lose a two somewhere?
Did we lose a two?
Uh, cuz we had two cos theta D theta, and then we wrote just cos theta.
Oh, but cuz there's a sign, there's a two on the bottom.
Uh but isn't there also a two in the didn't, in the numerator?
And that's moved out to the front.
Oh, okay.
So now we have to integrate this, which is cos squared over sine, which is um, let's see, how would I do this? I need to integrate cos squared over sine, cos squared is one minus sine squared, but how does that help us? One over sine is secant. One minus sine, sine squared, sine squared is integral sine, integrate secant, yeah, okay, we can do this by, we can do this by saying. Uh so I'm gonna say cos, cos squared. Theta is one minus sine squared theta. So two times the integral of one minus sine squared theta over sine theta D theta. So I can separate this integral out, so it's gonna be one over sine, which is just secant, right, or cos secant. Cos secant theta minus sine theta D theta. Right, cuz it's gonna be sine squared over sine, which is that, uh integral of cos secant is just another thing that I have to find.
Is it, and it's like a lawn one, I don't remember exactly. It's uh negative lawn cos secant X plus cotangent X. Although this is another one that I think has multiple versions, but this is the one I have here, it's negative lawn. Cos secant X plus cotangent X magnitude.
So uh cos secant X plus cotangent?
Cotangent, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Came right there, so.
What'd you say?
I was saying he had some physics coming right there, he said magnitude, I was like.
Um, okay, so integral of negatives, of negatives, well, two times negative sine is, well, derivative of. Cos is negative sine, so it's just cos, so plus two cos theta. Uh no D theta, obviously, plus C, okay, so we're here now, and so all I wanna do, we're out of integration. And let me just see this quickly. Uh somehow. Uh, this, well, not somehow, I mean, are we hundred percent sure this is the formula, cuz for, I mean, it might just have different versions, of course.
It's another one that has different versions, I don't know what the correct version is.
It's gonna be slightly different if I do it. Okay, I don't know, I'm gonna do the one that they have in the textbook, which is, it's not a, it's not a minus in the front, it's a minus in here. That's the difference, it's a minus in there, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick with that. Um but yeah, two lawn absolute value, now cos secant theta, what's that, well, we just said up here. That X equals two sine theta, what that tells us is that theta equals sine inverse. X over two. Right, sine inverse X over two, so it's gonna be cos secant of sine inverse of X over two. Minus cotan of sine inverse of X over two. And absolute value plus two cosine of sine inverse X over two plus C. Right? So um well, yeah, let's, let's start breaking these up, so these are gonna take a second to do, so if I, I'm trying to evaluate what is, let's start with. Cos secant of sine inverse X over two. So theta equals sine X over two, or sorry, sine, sine theta. Sin theta equals X over two, so we have a triangle. Uh sine is opposite over hypotenuse, so X over two. So cos secant theta, cos secant is one over sine, so one over sine is hypotenuse over opposite. So two over X, so this is equal to two over X. Okay, so similarly, let's do uh, let's figure out what cotan of this is, so we need cotan of it here. Cotan is one over tan, tan is opposite over adjacent, so adjacent over opposite. Adjacent is gonna be two squared, so four minus X squared, so adjacent over opposite is gonna be. Um so this one right here is gonna be the square root of four minus X squared over X. And then I need cosine of that, so cosine is adjacent over hypotenuse, so adjacent is the square root of four minus X squared over two. So I can plug all this in now, two lawn absolute value, two over X minus. Square root of four minus X squared over X plus two. Square root of four minus X squared over two, so those two is cancel, it's gonna be square root of four minus X squared. Uh plus. Yeah.
Just to be clear, what did you actually do for the, with the? Secant and then the sine inverse inside, like, did you just treat the sine inverse X over two as a? Single variable, and then you had one over cosine and you solved for that, and then you just reciprocated it?
Yeah, are you, you're asking, how did I get two over X here, what was, like, how did I get all these things?
Yeah, for either of them, any one of the, yeah.
So I'll do it in more detail here, so cos secant of sine inverse of X over two. We're gonna try to evaluate this, right, so I don't really know exactly how to evaluate this yet, but if I just say theta. Equals sine inverse X over two, right, then, then I can equivalently evaluate. Cos secant of theta.
Okay, yeah.
Right, well, what can we, what can we learn from this, well, we can learn from this, that sine of theta is X over two. Remember that sine is adjacent over hypotenuse, no, sorry, oppo- opposite over hypotenuse. So if I draw a triangle, right, if I draw a triangle, the opposite side is X, the hypotenuse is two. Then if I, I can try to find cos secant theta, this, this is the same theta in both these cases, sine theta and cos secant theta. So cos secant is one over sine, so that's gonna be two over X.
I do this in a slightly different way, although I know how to do both ways, but I find a different way simpler, which is.
Okay.
We know our equation for X, it's X equals two sine theta, right? So I, you can solve that equation for sine, you get X over two is equal to sine theta. We know that cos, uh two cos theta is equal to square root of four minus X squared. Uh we found, we found that in the integral, but like, we, we, we know that that's true. You can solve that for cos theta, if you know sine theta, cos theta, you can get every other trig uh.
Yeah, you can get every, so through that, yeah, I see what you mean, I see what you mean.
I mean, uh this way, I mean, either way works, I just, I like to use the equations that I already have. But triangle is, it's the same thing, you're doing the same thing either way.
Yeah, and you get the same answer, so yeah, I see what you mean.
Am I have a question?
Yeah.
Um so can you scroll up to where um you go from the integral to the two lawn? So um, is this a, a formula that you used for uh cos secant, the integral of cos secant?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, alright, alright.
There's some, definitely some way to derive that, but I don't know it, I don't know though.
Yeah, yeah, okay, alright, thank you.
Wait, so you said the textbook said minus?
Yeah, it says, it says. Negative in the middle and no negative in the front, and I'm trying to think of how that's the same, but it's not the same.
Yeah, but the one from my professor is negative outside. Yeah, uh and they're probably both the same thing in some way.
Yeah, I don't know what they are, I guess by a constant?
Hmm, cuz you're adding, you're subtracting from in the lawn in this one, would you get a negative value?
Let's see what it is, so negative lawn of cos secant X. Uh plus cotan.
Wait, where in the textbook was it uh saying that it was negative?
Yeah, negative outside. Uh there's, I forget where it is, it might be in the front of the textbook, but there's a uh.
There's an appendix with the table of integrals at the back of the book. Um where it says that the cos secant uh U DU is equal to lawn cos secant U minus cotangent U plus C. So there's no negative.
I have one that, that my prof gave me that has the, the other one, but they are the same.
They are exactly the same, so.
Okay.
There we go, I don't really know how, the negative, so it's the power of negative one, and so.
Maybe odd and even functions?
Possibly, but these are all, these are both.
I mean, regardless, if you lose marks because you used a different equation, just ask for a remark.
Yeah.
Cuz you should still get the right answer regardless.
Okay, so, yeah, question?
No, we find it so we make sure we don't get um bad mark, mathematicians find this real truth, good for them, yeah.
Okay, so let's maybe do the mini test now on this. That's probably good, uh so the mini test, this is mini test two. So that's gonna be the integral of lawn X to the five over X square root. Nine plus two lawn squared X DX. So this might not immediately seem like it's a uh. Trig substitution question, um but it is.
Oh yeah, so don't you just like substitute lawn and then like do the one factor out, do I remember? Now, how, how you do it, like you factor out something, sounds like one plus. X or something.
Yeah, yeah, so the first step, the first step is definitely U equals lawn X, so DU equals one over X DX. Well, luckily, we have a one over X DX in there, so it's gonna be U to the five over. Square root of nine plus two U squared. Right? Erwin, could you repeat again?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I don't know.
You got it, okay, uh. Um, so then DU, we already have DU is fine, right? So integral now, this on the bottom here, it's not quite A squared plus X squared, right, it's not quite that, it's gonna be. U to the five over the integral, sorry, the integral, the square root of, so three squared. Plus root two U squared. Right, root two U squared. And at this point, I mean, I could say, I, I could say, yeah, why not, why couldn't I say that? I don't think I have to actually, let me, let me just see something quickly.
Doesn't have to be in, like, doesn't you have to have no coefficient?
Yeah.
I thought you had to factor that out first.
Yeah, you're right, so I, I, in my solution that I did before, it was root two, I said V equals root two U. DV equals root two DU, right? So if I say the integral now of, so this is gonna be U to the five. So it's gonna be V to the five over, well, no, V over, V over two to the five. No, V over root two to the five. Is that what I wrote here, let me just check that. V over root two to the five, yeah, um and sorry, I should just be clear, it's one over root two this, one over root two times this, right? Uh times this is three squared plus V squared, there. So just another uh. Use substitutions or two uses, we had to do that because, yeah, you're right, there has to be no coefficient on in front of the U here. Now, we have something that's in the form A squared plus X squared. If you look back up at our formula, you know, if you see A squared plus X squared, you say X equals A tan theta. So X equals three tan theta DX equals three. Secant squared theta D theta. Um and so from here, we can uh substitute everything in. I guess it should be V, should be, should be V, yeah. Um and so now one over root two times the integral of, so three tan theta over root two. To the power five. Over square root of three squared plus three squared tan squared theta. D uh not D theta, sorry, three secant squared theta D theta. Now we're entirely in thetas, right, so it's gonna be one over root two. And this is now gonna be, well, uh. Uh, root two to the power five times root two to the power one is root two to the power six, so. Root two to the power six, so two to the power three is eight. Hopefully, that wasn't too confusing, so I get it, these, this, and this combines into a one over eight. And then I'm left with a three to the five, I'll move the three to the five out, three to the five. Tan to the five over, so square root of three squared, square root of one plus. Tan squared theta, well, one plus tan squared theta. Is one plus tan squared is secant squared, conveniently, right? And still, there's a three, I'll move a three to the front, so three to the six, secant squared theta D theta. So we have three to the six over eight integral of, well, I guess there's a three squared over here too, so that's a three, so I'm gonna take that out off of there. Tan to the five theta over square root of secant squared theta. Secant squared theta D theta. So this is just gonna be um secant squared, square rooted is just secant, right? And then that's gonna cancel with this one up there, so that's our new integral. And to do this, well, I think we just do uh. What do we do, tan? We just use one of, we use one of the things from three point two, so let's look at our three point two uh table, so for three point two, we said.
U equals secant theta, and then they did uh DU is equal to secant theta, tan theta, D, D theta. I'm looking at the bipolar question.
Yeah, you're looking at the answers, okay, I want to try, let's just try to see it with the, with the algorithm here, right, so. Uh it was sec, secant, let me see what I said was the, this is integration by, no. Um yeah, I wanna see where it is here quickly. So the secant is J, tan is K. Secant is J, so J equals one, K equals five. So if K is odd, yep, use eight, eight was, oh, let's go back up to eight. Eight was this one, secant squared is one plus tan squared. So secant squared equals one plus tan squared theta. Theta. To eliminate all but one tan and then substitute U equals secant, yeah, that makes sense. So it's gonna be three to the five over eight integral of, well, this is gonna be tan to the tan squared theta. Squared tan theta secant theta D theta. So three to the five over eight, now tan squared is is one minus secant squared, or no, sorry, secant squared minus one. So this is gonna be the integral of secant squared minus one squared. Um tan theta secant theta D theta. And then I just say uh U equals secant. Theta DU is C uh no, sorry, U equals secant, secant theta. Sorry, my writing is terrible today, I know, I could, I don't know why. DU is secant. Theta. Tan theta D theta. We have that there luckily. So it's three to the five over eight integral of U squared minus one squared DU. Which is not too hard. Three to the five over five integral of, so it's gonna be U to the four minus two U squared plus one. Uh DU. So it's three to the five over, it's an eight, eight. Three to the five over eight integral, well, no integral anymore, it's gonna be um times U to the five over five. Minus two over three U to the three plus U. Plus C, but yeah, plus C actually, no reason to forget that. Um and now let's simplify this a little bit, so it's gonna be three to the five over eight times five, eight times five is forty. U to the five, but U was um secant theta, so secant theta to the five. Minus, it's gonna be um uh. Three to the four over four. Secant cubed theta plus three to the five over eight. Secant theta plus. Now we're in thetas, so now I gotta go back, substitute what's what was my theta that I chose? So here is the the theta that I chose. So this will tell us that theta is equal to tan inverse of three over, sorry, V over three. V over three. And I'm only a few steps away from X, right? So still still a few steps, but yeah, tan tan inverse of V over three. So this is gonna be three to the five over forty. Secant to the five. Tan. Inverse of V over three. Minus three to the four over four, you know what, I shouldn't have expanded the. Things, but it's too late now, tan. Inverse of V over three. Um that's fine, plus three to the five over eight. Secant tan. Inverse of V over three plus C. And now we can uh well evaluate what all these things are. Luckily, it's all the same thing, so I'm evaluating, essentially, I'm just evaluating what's secant of tan inverse of V over three. Luckily, they're all. They're all secant of that. So essentially, I say tan inverse, no, sorry, I say, yeah, tan inverse. Of V over three equals theta. Which tells us that theta equals, no, no, tan theta equals V over three. Tan is adjacent over, no, opposite over adjacent. So we have a triangle where the opposite is V and the adjacent is three. So I want secant of that. Secant is one over cos, cosine is adjacent over hypotenuse, so what's the hypotenuse? Well, it's gonna be. Three squared plus V squared, so. Secant is again one over cos, cosine is adjacent over hypotenuse, so hypotenuse over adjacent is this over this. So this is um root three squared, well, say root nine plus V squared over three. So now plugging all this in, we have, um so it's gonna be three to the five over forty. And then it's gonna be this to the power five, so the three to the five and three to five are gonna cancel, so it's gonna be one over forty. Times um uh the square root of nine plus V squared, well, sorry, nine plus V squared to the five halves. Minus, okay, um three to the five again on the bottom, so it's gonna be um one over twelve. And the top is gonna be nine plus V squared to the three halves. Plus, okay, three to the five over, why is it three to the four here? How'd that happen?
So one of the threes from the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, from from the integration, yeah, yeah, you're right. Um so then here we have uh, it's gonna be the three to the five and three to five are gonna cancel, oh, sorry, this is not.
I have a question though, when you're finished.
I made a mistake, yeah, yeah, I made a mistake. Um this is gonna be. The top is right, nine plus V squared to the three halves. And then we're gonna get a three to the power three, which is gonna cancel with three to the power three on the top, so it's gonna be three over four times this.
How do we get the bottom part again, to be fair, like I still not getting.
Yeah, so I'm, okay, I'm I am skipping some steps here, so let me write it out better. So we said that secant of tan inverse of V over three is there's root nine plus V squared over three. So I'm just gonna plug that in here, so it's gonna be three to the five over forty. Secant to the five of this, so it's just to the five, so it's gonna be. Root nine, root nine plus V squared over three to the five. Minus three to the four over four. Root nine plus V squared over three cubed. Plus three to the five over eight. Times root V nine plus V squared over three. Plus C. And now, I'll just erase this and I'll do it again. So the three to the five and three to the five cancel, so this is still one over forty. Times nine plus V squared to the five halves. Minus, so three to the three cancels with three to the three on the top, so it's gonna be three over four. Times uh nine plus V squared to the three halves. Plus, this is gonna be three to the four over eight. Times. The square root, I'll just say nine plus V squared to the one half plus. And now we're in the V world, we have V, so I need to substitute back again, so I said V was root two U, so everywhere I see a V, I have to say a root two U. So it's gonna be one over forty, nine plus two U. Squared, sorry, two U squared to the five halves. Minus three over four, nine plus two U squared to the three halves. Plus three to the four, four over eight, nine plus two U squared to the one half plus C. We substitute U back in, now I gotta go back again, what's U? Well, we said U was lawn X, so finally. One over forty. Nine plus two lawn squared X. To the five halves minus three over four. Nine plus two lawn squared X to the three halves. Plus three to the four over eight. Nine plus two lawn squared X to the one half plus C.
I remember this being lengthy.
Yeah, it was a long one.
But I just had one question though, well sooner, how did you, did you just? And I saw your first substitution of V, and that was after your first U substitution. Then I saw you use V again, and then you said it to tan. Didn't get that.
Where did I set it to? V. Yeah, yeah, so this, this is a U substitution, this is like a normal U sub, what's with the V though, right? That's the only difference, this is like a U sub. And this is our trig sub. This is our trig sub, this is what three point four is about, is the trig sub, so you set the variable you care about. Equal to some theta, something happening with theta, depending on the situation. And so, yeah, so it's not, it's not another U sub, it's a trig sub.
Oh, because of uh the three squared plus V squared and.
Exactly, the three squared plus V squared, yeah, that's 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 gonna give me.
Okay, that makes sense. Because that would have been the tan times the A, right? Which is the, okay.
Yeah.
Right? Am I right or?
Yeah, ten ten times the, like, like down here, right, this.
Because it would have been V over three equal to tan theta, and you just turned.
Yeah, V over three equals tan, yeah, that's right.
Uh next thing, it's, I don't know why, but I just, I just can't seem to accept how you did the. If you scroll down, the, I get like the inside of the. The sine inverse, how you find the value, but then the cosine outside. Like here, like you have tan inverse, I get how you find a tan inverse, which is the. Which gives you the root three squared plus V squared, I can get that, that. The secant, which is the um. Yeah, I don't record, um like, I I don't get that one.
Yeah, so this is a thi- this is our theta in here, it's the same theta, we're saying that this is equal to secant theta. Right? So remember, secant is one over cos theta.
Yeah.
Right? Cos theta is uh adjacent over hypotenuse, this is one over adjacent over hypotenuse, so hypotenuse over adjacent.
Yeah.
So I just take the hypotenuse over the adjacent. And that's equal to nine plus V squared over three.
So also initially, it's not because of the tan inverse why you got the root. Nine plus V squared, I thought you had like substituted in. Um root three squared plus V squared to get you the first part and then divided by three, but I get it now.
No, yeah, you do, this is from the triangle, this is like from the. Tan is what gives us this triangle, and this is like, we have to solve for that extra side.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense now.
Um can you go back down please, if that's okay? I don't understand how you got three over four, because I don't like, uh, when I was doing it, I'm getting uh. The three over two. Cause I don't know if you not included your eight, like, you know, there's like. Uh three to the five over eight, that I look, what I did was I did the same thing, but I like. For the three, three, three to the power five over eight, I like uh included that at the end. And when I did that, I got uh two, three over two and now three over four. I don't know if I'm wrong.
So the the. So here's something that affects it, right? Yeah, we have two U squared. Two U squared, yeah, we have two U squared in our integral here, which gives me two over three U cubed, and then that combines with here with the eight. And that gives me three over, three to the four over four. Okay, let's let's put it in Wolfram and then compare the answers, so.
I know what I did wrong.
You know what you did wrong? Okay.
Yeah, I put four over three in that, I don't know why I did, I think I multiplied them twice or something, I'm stupid.
Well, it's good you found it, it's good you found it.
Yeah, imagine making a mistake in the, like, at the end of this, so.
This this is like an exam question, I swear, this is like, oh, the the ones that are worth more points is something like this.
Yeah, imagine like.
My only thing is, cause we always.
Hold on, someone's echoing, who's who's echoing?
Is it me?
Is it you? No, you, hold on.
Joshua.
Joshua, is it you?
I don't know.
Can you mute for a second, see if it's you? Okay, I don't, I can't tell, okay, sorry, keep going, carry on.
Uh I was just saying, if you're gonna do the integral of two S for, two S. Or mine is yours is U, so two uh. Two S, two U to the power of two, shouldn't it be two times two over three, which should be four over three? Because it's two, right, and you're doing the integral, so should, when you do the integral of U's uh U's. U Q, U squared, it should be. Oh, no, never mind, oh, okay, yeah, no.
There you go, okay, good.
Yeah.
I'm, you 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 got that, good, yeah, so that that's, there's, maybe that's where you made your mistake before? Just doing this?
Yeah, I did.
Good, don't worry, don't worry, I'm happy you found it, I'm happy you found your mistake.
Now I'm just saying, if you realize that you made a mistake. In this, so you know, to like, putting like half an hour into it, would you try to go through it again, or we just move on to the next question?
Actually, when I was, when I was doing this, I like, I was like looking through my stuff and I realized there was some sort of mistake. Something was happening, so I I went through it, this like, this took the full hour for me because of that mistake.
Yeah, but that's different, like, this is the question, like, one question, if you had like five, cuz we have, we have five questions tomorrow, Monday, is it five or six?
Six.
So, yeah, so if it, if if this was one of the questions that you made a mistake, then you would have to like, just move on, cuz it's like, it's not worth spending.
You get them part marks and you take your losses.
Yeah, you take your losses.
Yeah.
Isn't it only like zero point five, like? Mark off, it's just like.
Should be, yeah.
The better you get at recognizing where you messed up and how, and the quicker you get that, the better your tests.
I guess, and the only way to do it, guys, is practice, so.
Yes, mess up and know where you're gonna mess up.
Yeah, okay, let's move on to three point four, which is partial fractions, um and probably all. Fractions, probably all the time I'll have is to just do a general explanation and then do the one example I have in my notes. And that'll be all the time that we have for today, um so. Um so partial fractions in general is like if I just want the 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 intro. Okay. So um if we have the integral of three X over X squared minus X minus two DX. We don't particularly know how to deal with this, right? Not quite, but if I were to tell you that this is equal to the integral of one over X plus one. Plus two over X minus two DX. We do know how to deal with this, right? It's gonna be a bunch of lawns. So there is a way to turn this fraction into this pro- uh this sum. That's called partial fraction decomposition, so. In general, how you do it is you, you have something in the form, like you're you're in, you're trying to integral, you're trying to integral, you're trying to integrate. P of X over Q of X. DX, so the first step to figure out is, okay, can you actually divide by long division? Can you divide these polynomials? If so, do it, and it'll simplify into simplify into something simpler. Um then you wanna factor the denominator. The denominator will factor into some amount of linear factors and quadratic factors. And then we wanna equate this, we wanna use those factors to find our our uh sum. The sum of these of these fractions like that, and then integrate the fractions instead. Now, the hard part is finding that sum, right? So I'm going to show it in general here, and I'm gonna show it in general, and then we're gonna go. Um we're gonna go through the example I have in my notes, so I think that the this is uh. Hard to understand in words, but not too hard to do in actual writing, so. If your denominator factors, for for each factor of the denominator, right? If the factor is linear, then write this, A over AX plus B, that's the linear factor on the bottom there. If it appears twice, like it's squared, you'd write this. And do that for each linear factor, add them all up. Add all the fractions up. This extends as you'd expect to like N times, if it appears N times. And then you can also have an irreducible quadratic factor on the bottom, in which case you'd have to put a linear term on the top, A plus B, now A and B and C and D here. Those are all just some numbers that we have to figure out, there are, there exists some A, B, C, D in all these cases. That makes it true, that makes it equal. And so the goal is to find that. So again, if you have irreducible quadratic factors that uh on the denominator that appear twice, you do something like this, and again, this extends how you'd expect to N times. So let's do the example that I have. Um so the example I have.
If we have.
Yeah.
So if we have irreducible quadratic factors, how does that particularly help us if you have a linear factor on top?
Well, eh the goal isn't really to cancel factors, the goal, that that's not the goal, it's just to factor it to do the partial fraction decomposition. You need just the denominator's factors to do the partial fractions.
Yeah, but how could, like, that doesn't particularly make it easier for us to integrate them.
Well, this, oh, okay, so you're saying like, yeah, yeah, integrating something like this, right, integrating something like this. Um you're right, it might not be that much easier, but it'll be different, so hope, I guess the idea is, is hopefully it's easier. Um which is probably the best.
What was he trying to say?
What was he trying to say?
So basically, when you have, it's basically when you have irreducible quadratic factors, like you look at the form and it just looks confusing. Right, and it's, it's basically the exact, uh, equip, like, exact, um. Example that, uh, Adam gave like right, right above this, and like, how does that particularly help us if we're trying to integrate? But I guess it, uh, putting it into a different form might maybe give us away.
This looks difficult to integrate, yeah, but it's putting it in a different form, hopefully will give you something, and you know, there's, there's not always like. Integration techniques are not like, you know, like now every time you see a, a ratio of functions, you can integrate it, that's not true. This is just a technique that helps sometimes when you see a ratio, and the questions that they give us are gonna be the examples where it helps, what'd you say?
I said, like, it's, all of them are technically sometimes, I'm sure there are some examples where most something, that's not gonna work.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, for the last part, you probably would have to break it up again, or something.
Something like that.
And usually when they give us questions on the mini test, it'll look confusing, once you get to it, it'll simplify a bunch. So if they're gonna give us something like this, it'll be something that is.
Like the first mini test, I was, for first, for the longest file, I was like, what the hell is this, and then when I finally sighed, I was like, oh. It's just some power thing.
Okay, let's get, let's get into this question here, so we have this integral that we're trying to do. I'm going to now try to do partial fractions on this ra- rational function. So, uh, X Q, so X squared over X cubed minus X squared plus four X minus four. So I have to equate this to a bunch of sums of fractions, so the first part is to see if I can divide. Um, but I can't divide, so, okay, because the, uh, power on the top is smaller than the power on the bottom, the degree, so we can't divide. Okay, now factor the denominator. So how would you do that, well, you can guess values, you can put it in Desmos, you can put it in your calculator, your calculator can do it. Um, I'll just tell you that the factors are gonna be, so you can factor it into X squared over X minus one. X squared plus four. Of course, you can also do like the actual method to factor something like this with like rational root theorem and, um, factor theorem, but, yeah, that's the whole other thing. So that's our factors, what do we have, we have a linear factor, yeah?
So you just, did you just do that by hand, or did you just have it written down already?
I had it written down already, I didn't just know that, yeah, I didn't just know that, that. The point isn't to know how to factor that, yeah, like, how you factor that is up to you, how you do it, but, yeah. Um, so now we have this form, so the idea is that I can write this, like, the whole point of partial fractions is that there exists. Some A, B, and C that makes the, the following equation true, X squared plus four, okay. First, for the linear factor, I'm gonna write A over X minus one, um, no brackets needed, A over X minus one. Plus BX plus C over X squared plus four. Since that's an irreducible quadratic factor, I put a linear term on the top, and since this is a linear term, I put a zero order term on the top, so just a number. And so the, the whole point, again, the whole point is, is of partial fractions is that there exists some A, B, and C that make this true, we have to solve for that. So in order to solve for that, you want to multiply the both sides by this denominator. So what's gonna happen is it's gonna be X squared on that side, then it's gonna be AX squared plus four. Think about that for a second, right, I'm multiplying by this, so it's gonna cancel the X minus one, it's gonna cancel here, it's gonna X squared plus four. Plus BX plus C times X minus one. What I do now is I, I multiply this out, so it's gonna be X squared equals AX squared plus four A. Plus BX squared minus BX plus CX minus C. Okay, and I'm gonna group the terms, the squared terms, it's gonna be A plus BX squared. Now, the, the, uh, C, the X terms is gonna be C minus BX plus four A minus C. And let's look at this carefully, X squared is equivalent to saying X squared, one X squared, plus zero X plus zero. What that tells us is that A plus B equals one. C minus B equals zero. And four A minus C equals zero. Right, so we're gonna have A plus B equals one, C minus B equals zero. Four A minus C equals zero. Looks relatively familiar, this is a system of linear equations. We can solve this, uh, using whatever technique you wanna solve, again, that's not the point, so solve this using, solve. Using linear algebra. And we're gonna get the following results, A equals one fifth, B equals four fifths. And C equals four fifths. So what this means is I set up here that this equation is true, there exists some A, B, and C that make this equation true. Right, I can just sub it in now, A is one fifth, right, I can put one fifth. B is four fifths. And C is four fifths. And there we go, so now if I wanna find the integral of this with respect to X, I can just find the integral of this with respect to X. Right? Okay, which might not necessarily be instantly easier, right? In fact, I'll leave a one, I'll, I'll write it like one fifth like that. But let's take a look at what we can do, so. First of all, this integrates pretty easily, this is gonna be one fifth lon absolute value X minus one. Plus, okay, factor out a four fifths, four fifths, integral, X plus one over X squared plus four DX. Okay. So what we do now is we say, uh, well, okay, well, one fifth lon absolute value X minus one. Plus, okay, four fifths, integral, X over X squared plus four. Plus one over X squared plus four. DX. Split up that numerator. This is equal to one over five lon absolute value X minus one, plus, here I can do a U sub. So U equals, um, X squared plus four, DU equals two X DX. Right, so, sorry, probably had a bad spot, oops. It's not what I meant to do, so, do a U sub there. So I'm gonna have to say, um, one half, so it's gonna be two fifths, the integral of. Uh, one over U DU. Oh, the typo in the notes, I realized, yeah, the typo, but it's not a bad typo, it's just typo, um. Two fifths, yeah, that's fine, plus the integral of one over X squared plus four DX now. The integral of one over X squared plus four DX might seem, um.
Don't we also multiply that by four fifths?
We do also. Something I very often forget for some reason, um, so. Okay, let's forget about that for one second, I'm just gonna write the thing here, one fifth lon absolute value X minus one. Plus two fifths lon absolute value U, we said U was X squared plus four, that's where the typo is, I just put a two there instead by accident. Instead of four, um. Plus four fifths, well, the integral of one over X squared plus A squared is tan inverse X over A. Or A tan inverse X over A, I should be clear. Yeah, wait, A or one over A, sorry, forget now, uh, so that's a calculus one formula.
If I remember correctly.
It's what, sorry?
I said, I think it's one over eight times a ten, whatever, inside.
It's, it's one over eight tan inverse X over A.
There we go.
So this is the, this is the calculus one formula. Right there, so that's what we have, and so this is gonna be, yeah, one over two. Tan, tan inverse X over two, so the one over two and the two here cancel.
It's such a calculus one.
That's from calculus one, that's from five point seven and calculus one.
Starting to forget what I learned, where I just learned, I just know it. Yeah, okay.
And there we go.
All the, all the math just merges into one thing.
Yeah.
And it's just all.
It, it's to infinity, yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, that's, that's all the topics for today, that's all I got for today, um, cause it's ten o'clock now. So tomorrow, we're gonna try to, I guess my goal isn't exactly to get through every single bit of the course, I think. We're gonna definitely finish the chapter three and chapter four, cause it's been a while since we've done that, so it's good to review that. And chapter five, cause it's also been a while since we've done that, but maybe at some point in chapter five. We'll start doing, we'll stop, stop doing chapter five and start doing practice midterms, um, and then tomorrow. And we probably will not do much chapter six or chapter four of the, of the other book, because we just did that, so you can watch my videos recently if you wanna. Re, you know, refresh on that, but I think the most important thing is that we really, you know, refresh on the old stuff, which is the, the stuff. So, yeah, so definitely gonna do, finish, finish chapter three tomorrow, finish chapter four tomorrow, do a lot, you know, some, a per, you know, some amount of chapter five. Maybe all of chapter five, and then practice tests tomorrow, that's the plan. Probably gonna go for a long one tomorrow.
Yeah, this is bringing that hundred percent.
Important notice for comp, ELE and BME, there is a ELE two O two study hall by one of the props tomorrow morning. There's an out, an announcement about it on FYE, just, I thought I'd let people know, cause it's in the morning, so if you like sleeping in. Uh, don't do that if you wanna go.
This time, yeah. Okay, yeah, thank you for the announcement, that, that is important. Um, but yeah, so I'm here for a few more minutes, if you have any questions, and other than that, have a good night, I'll talk to you guys tomorrow, if you're here tomorrow, not, good luck.
I'll see you.
Uh, yeah, how long is tomorrow, well, I started at five, and until we finish everything we wanna do, so, um.
Sounds good.
Up to, wouldn't go later than ten.
Okay, okay. Uh, do you think we're gonna do anything on, on the day of, so like, like a quick two hour thing or like?
I don't, I don't think I can, because I'd have to do it before nine AM. I'd have to do it before nine AM, and I'm not gonna do it before nine AM, so.
Alright, yeah.
Wait, it's, what's, isn't, when is the test, okay, isn't it like from sometime to sometime?
Exactly.
You can do any time in between that, but it's, you have to make sure to do it like, uh, three hours before, uh, nine. Because it's, it's gonna take you three hours, at least after they say.
Some people said that it's like the same thing as mini test, so like, you could start at nine, just the link is open until nine apparently.
Yeah, you could potentially start at nine and end at.
I don't know how it's gonna work, but I think playing it safe.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't start, yeah, I'd start before six, I'd start before.
Yeah, like, who'd want to do it so late in the night anyway, I don't know. Alright, guys, I mean, on the offhand chance that someone's on the other side of the world and it's convenient. What were you saying, Adam?
No, I was just saying, that's, that's true, if, if someone's on the other side of the world, it might be convenient for them to, to do that.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, doesn't it work as the mini test, cause I used to start my mini tests at like nine fifty-five?
Yeah, yeah, but I, I think it is the same as a mini test, I think you are able to start late, um, but I'm not.
I don't know about that.
I'm not, I don't know, I, yeah, I don't know for sure, but, yeah.
Before, I would just do it like before six or at six, just.
So, so you guys do it at six PM? Okay.
I'm gonna do it before that, but yeah.
I'll probably do it closer to the morning.
Twelve, I'll probably do it at twelve.
And that's what I was thinking, I'm doing, I was thinking I'm doing it.
Yeah. It's gotta be good, I feel, I feel like the whole gang can roll in some hundreds on that final. I'm, I, I have faith in you guys.
I think so. Okay, guys, that's everything for today, I'll stop recording.